Commissioner Bernard McBride and my partner, Commissioner Shlone Title. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for coming today. This is an incredibly important part of our process and we appreciate both your coming here and your thoughtful comments that we will listen to, take seriously, and put into our processes as we finalize our regulations. So, thank you very much. I apologize that not everybody has a seat. Those of you who are on the floor, that's great. Anybody else, you're welcome. This is the floor. But again, I apologize if there aren't seats for everybody. But I do want to thank the Health Policy Commission for allowing us to use the room. They've allowed us to use this room many times and we're deeply grateful. We asked that the colleague who is the receptionist across the hall along, she doesn't work for the commission, she works for the Health Policy Commission. And so, I appreciate it if you wouldn't ask for any papers from her. But we are deeply grateful to the Health Policy Commission. I want to quickly go through both where we find the whole process and then talk about logistics for today and then get started. We have a lot of people that have signed up, so my intention and objective and commitment is we'll give everybody a chance to speak that wants to do today. The way the process is that, as those of you who follow us know, we started a process a few months ago to modify our original regulations that were promulgated in March of 2018, both to reflect the fact that we now have responsibility for the federal program as well as reflect the fact that we've learned as we've ruled out this industry and realized that we need to make some adjustments to our original regulations. So, we started a process where we publicly debated policy at our commission meeting. We then developed, debated, and voted on a set of draft regulations that were promulgated about six weeks ago. We are now in a public comment period and we have been receiving and are grateful for the receipt of comments from anybody that was interested in weighing in on our draft regulations. That public comment period ends at 5:00 PM tomorrow. So, we have this public hearing today. We have another public hearing tomorrow in Springfield. And when that is over at 5:00 PM tomorrow, the public comment period is over as well. So, for those of you that have not yet submitted public comments but wish to do so, please understand the timeline and get those comments to us sometime before 5:00 PM tomorrow. Once we have closed the public comment period, we are going to read and consider all the comments we got, whether they were in person at a public hearing like this or whether they were submitted through email or any other medium. And each of the commissioners, I can commit, will read every comment that has been submitted by the public. We will spend some time thinking about that. And then, second week in September, we will come back together at a public commission meeting and debate any changes that we believe are necessary to our draft regulations based upon the comments that we have received and vote to finalize those draft regulations at that time, the second week in September. So, we're almost at the end of the comment period, but we have a lot of work left. And again, I just wanted to repeat my thanks to those of you that have submitted comments and those of you that are here today. It's an incredibly important and valuable part of the process. Let me talk about logistics for the day and then we can get started. First of all, I know that we have two different sign-up sheets, one that said, "Please sign in," and one that said, "Please sign in to testify." I apologize if you signed the wrong sheet. What I'm going to do is I've got all the sheets. I'm going to call your name. And when it's your turn, I'm going to call your name. If you just signed in and don't wish to testify, just let me know. But I'm going to call, okay? I'm going to read every name. Just make sure I don't miss anybody that does want to testify. Based upon our timing, we have approximately 65 people who've signed up so far. I'm going to limit that to four minutes per person in terms of testimony time. That's actually more generous than we have done in the past when we've limited it to three. But I really, again, my primary objective is to ensure that everybody that wants to speak has a chance to do so. Commissioner Title drew the short straw and so she is going to be our timekeeper. And she will let you know when you have 30 minutes left, or 30 seconds left, excuse me. There was a 30 seconds left. When you have 30 seconds left. And, you know, I'm going to ask you for a few things to be respectful of your fellow speakers, but the most important thing is when your time's up for these remarks, you are welcome to submit written comments when it's your turn to speak. You can do it in person right now or you can send them over the Internet to us, but I will accept written comments today. Couple other things. When I call your name, if you do wish to testify, please come opposite to one of the table, one of the chairs in the table in front of me. I apologize in advance if I massacre any names. I try my best and sometimes the handwriting is a little bit difficult, but I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name. When you come up, please state your name. Also, state the organization you're associated with, if any. And then, please speak into the microphone. This meeting is being recorded, so two things. One is please speak into the microphone so that we can get that onto the recording. But be, please be aware because this is a public meeting and is being recorded, your comments are public and are available in a public records request. So, please note that everything you say today can be requested as a public records request. I ask you, as I said, to respect the time allotment that everybody has so that we can get everybody a chance to speak. I also ask the audience or the public in total, please abstain from applause, ruing any kind of, any kind of outbursts. This is, this is an important matter and I really think it's important that we're all respectful to one another. So, that being said, we will take a few breaks, probably one for lunch. I'm not sure about you guys, but I know I can't make it until four o'clock this afternoon without a lunch break. So, we'll take an appropriate lunch break at that point and we are done by 4:00 PM. We do not have this room past 4:00 PM, so we aren't stopped at 4:00 PM. Did I miss anything? Okay, great. So, again, I'm going to call names out. If you just signed up and don't wish to testify, just let me know and I'll go to the next name. But if you do, please step up to the table. First name on the list, Peter Bernard. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. Good commissioners, thanks for taking time to do this very important task. My name is Peter Bernard and I'm the Executive Director with the Massachusetts Grower Advocacy Council. And as the commission knows, we concern ourselves a lot with cultivation and manufacturing issues. I'd like to start today with some of the definitions. When I read your definition for clone, what I'm seeing is a definition of a cutting. There's a distinct difference. A clone has been rooted. A cutting has not. There is a distinct difference. You can have an eight-inch-long cutting, but if it doesn't have roots, it shouldn't be packed. Once that cutting has grown roots and they're put in a soil medium and hit eight inches, that's when metric considers a mature plant. So, there is a distinction when it comes to identifying those things. Another important fact with definitions is we're missing the definition of a mother plant. A mother plant is a plant that is perpetual vegetative state. It never goes to flower. Its job is to provide cuttings to create clones. I bring this up because if somebody's doing outside cultivation, they're only allowed to use supplemental lighting on an immature plant. Metric would call a mother plant a mature plant and therefore makes it ineligible for supplemental lighting. This turns into a big problem for outdoor cultivators because if they can't propagate their own clones, they're forced to buy them from another source or they're forced to grow them from seed. And that could take the cycle away from the month of the month, out of the summer. So, I think that's very important. Aside from definitions, I'd like to talk about the supply problem we have in Massachusetts. I and others warned you a couple of years ago about monopolized supply and that's exactly what we have today. We have a small amount of people controlling the supply. A pound of something decent in the legitimate market can run $4,500. Something just as good or better in the underground black market is $2,000. Until these numbers get closer together, there will be no impact on the underground black market. So, we have to increase supply. Prioritizing cultivation, specifically micro businesses, co-ops, tier one and tier two, are important to not only increase supply, but increase the diversity of the supply. There are many medical patients that will tell you, and some of them probably will today, that they can't get what they need from the licensed dispensaries. They can't get the types of things they need from licensed dispensaries, so they're forced to go in the underground. If we have these smaller growers, they're all going to grow different stuff, there's going to be a far more better range of options for the consumer, whether they be a patient or otherwise. Plus, we know these small businesses really need to leg out. If all the big-box stores get up first just to meet supply problems, the market is then set and these small guys don't have a chance to get in. Right now, these guys are bleeding money. This gentleman over here has been paying rent on buildings for a couple of years now without making a penny. If they keep bleeding out, they're never going to get the chance. These big-box stores have the pockets to weather that kind of bleeding. That's a family now trying to feed his family. What's that?
Thirty-five.
And he's not the only one. There's another one sitting over here. He's trying to feed his family and he's bleeding money, paying rent, thousands of dollars every month up in low. It's bleeding them to death. They need priority. You've got over 100 RMDs that never open for patients for whatever reason, but the adult-use came along and all of a sudden they've got the means to open. I have to call bullshit on that. I really do. They never opened to serve a patient and now they want adult-use? I'm sorry, that's just wrong.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Appreciate it. Next speaker is Michelle Herman.
Michelle Herman, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a Director for Mass Grower Advocacy Council as well. I also represent Boston Leaf. I'm here to talk about the fact, as I'm sure you guys know, because I've told you many times, that we came here, we're a medical refugee family. We came here to access cannabis for my daughter. We're still waiting for that. Why? Not because we can't get a card at this point. We can get a card, but where do we go buy it from? There is absolutely no product that I would give to my child that is to give to the dispensaries. If we had a possibility of having smaller businesses come in, but no, and I know that, first of all, I know River Run Gardens, I know Boston Leaf, I'm sorry, I know Bingham Green Hill, they would love to be medical. They are being forced to be recreational because they can't afford to be medical. Why can't we have smaller medical, personal people actually growing and having craft quality grows and having the kind of medicine that we need? I can't get the medicine that I want, not for myself, not for my daughter, unless I were to go to the illicit market. And I can't do that with her because I need to be careful because of legality issues and because of safety reasons. And I just, I'm, it's really frustrating that we have all of this talent and all of these growers that are out here that want to jump in and that want to get into the industry and want to be legal, but they're not being allowed to because it's too hard for them to get in. And they're now with all the bans and everything. If you're going for a rec license, you have to first deal with all the H, with all the hospital agreements, which is a whole, with everybody that's one of their status. But if it was medical, it was, it was truly, a lot of these people, truly, they, that's what they want to do. They want to give medicine to the people of Massachusetts. And I want us to be able to let them. I want to give my money to them. I would rather give my money to them to any big, any big box store because I know where that medicine's coming from. I know him and I know that he's making trustworthy medicine, good quality medicine that I can give to my daughter. And I just, do something, please. I mean, it's, it's really frustrating. It really is. I'm watching my daughter get worse and worse and I would like to see her getting the medicine that she needs. And I don't want to move again. Please don't make us move again. Because I went, I'll tell you, I went out to Colorado recently. So, what's happened in Colorado, I think is what's going to be starting here, is they basically streamlined everything for rec. I saw very little medicine, actual medicine. Even when they called it medicine, it was just a CB isolate. I'm sorry, that's not medicine. I would ask them what strain it was. It was just an E S T, a hybrid. That's all they had. Everything was 10 milligrams. It was with distillate. It was not medicine. I was in so much pain. I suffer from C, I have C4, C6 fusion. I also have Allee Dendro syndrome, so I have problems with my joints and whatnot, so I have a lot of pain. I was in tremendous amount of pain because I couldn't, even though I could go to the dispensary, it was right across the street where I'm staying, they did not have medicine. It wasn't medical, I'm sorry. Even when I went to the medical dispensaries, first of all, there was never a patient at all, which I can't imagine how that feels for someone coming here as well, who's coming as a medical patient that can't access medicine. That should be changed. I don't know. And of course, there's issues with education, with doctors. I still have to lie to my doctors and not tell them what I want, otherwise I get labeled as a cannabis abuser. And last time when I had that surgery where I was told that I was not allowed to put some cannabis 48 hours before my surgery, it was kind of funny because afterwards, when we did get the blood test back, I tested negative for cannabinoids, which, that's interesting because I'm a pretty heavy user as a medication. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Will Luzier. I think I go better, is it Luzier or Luzier? You can call me anything, but thank you for dinner earlier. How about I call you Will? Fine.
Good morning and thanks so much for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Will Luzier. I was the Campaign Manager for the Initiative that passed in 2016 and I'm currently a Cannabis Commerce Consultant. The mission statement of the Cannabis Control Commission begins with a phrase, "The mission of the Cannabis Control Commission is to honor the will of the voters of Massachusetts. I fear that the commission has strayed from this goal by proposing the use of body cameras to record every home delivery." The initiative that was endorsed by nearly 1.8 million holders in November of 2016 incorporated this prohibition. Regulations made pursuant to this section shall not require a customer to provide a marijuana retailer with identifying information other than identification to determine the customer's age and shall not require marijuana retailer to acquire or record personal information about customers other than information typically required in a retail transaction. That comes from Chapter 334 of the Act of 2016, Section 4C3, now included in Mass General Laws 94C, Section 4C3. The obvious purpose of this prohibition is to protect the privacy of cannabis consumers. The intrusion precipitated by a video recording of a person in their residence is a gross violation of their privacy. It is only one step away from surveillance, from surveillance through devices known as telescreens, in other words, two-way televisions, that George Orwell envisioned in his dystopian novel, 1984. The proposal to use body cameras for home delivery is contrary to the will of the voters and should be eliminated from the final regulations.
Thank you, Will. I must say, it's the first time I've ever heard the word dystopian in a public hearing. So, thank you.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chief John Carmichael.
Morning, Chief. Morning. Good morning. I'm John Carmichael, Police Chief of Walpole, and I'm joined with Chief Demora Fitzperch. I'm also a member of the Cannabis Advisory Board appointed by the Governor. It's crucial for the Cannabis Control Commission to maintain public safety as a priority for medical and adult-use marijuana in Massachusetts. Our strong safety regulations, compliance, and enforcement paramount to preserving the safety of these establishments, the staff, the people, the customers that are going in there, as well as the community and law enforcement that are there to protect these establishments as they continue to open up. I'm just going to quickly focus on a few issues, general topics, delivery services, social consumption, and cash handling. On the delivery services, some of the things that we mentioned in the Cannabis Advisory Board that weren't included, we really should strictly forbid deliveries to any public place. We should forbid any transaction from taking place when the pre-verified ID is not matched. This is just a safety mechanism. And any delivery outside of the area should be strictly enforced as well. I think the Cannabis Control Commission should maintain that $10,000 limit, not to exceed that. It's substantial for deliveries, I believe. I'm sorry, this one couldn't.
I just think you need to have a roller coaster, Chief. Thank you.
And, and then, where was I?
$10,000.
The elephant in the room, the body cameras, okay? The marijuana establishment has robust security mechanisms in place right now. There's video surveillance systems, there's limited access areas, identification procedures, and that would extend to delivery. And I'm advocating for the delivery person's safety. And unfortunately, you know, there is crime, violent crime that's been committed here in Massachusetts in the illicit side of the market. People have been hurt, people have been killed. And there's no reason for us to believe that that won't extend beyond that market and into the illegal market. And so, somebody has to advocate for that delivery person, that person that could be put in the hottest way, could be at risk. And delivery's going to be on child's territory and I think that it's essential to provide that delivery person with as much safety as we can. And I could get into it a lot more, but I would suggest that the Cannabis Control Commission keep that mechanism in there and the use of cameras to help as a deterrent and provide and prevent any violent type of situation. How am I for time? I think it's over, yes?
One minute.
Don't count me out, you.
One minute.
Social consumption, it's, you know, I understand the pilot program. Unfortunately, I think that it should be a non-starter because until we have a suitable means, a deterrent in place to address the issue of care driving, we shouldn't be going there, period. The Cannabis Control Commission should, however, I think, encourage the O U Y Commission, accept those O U Y Commission recommendations and encourage the legislature to move forward with providing the tools necessary to keep the program safe. Is that it? And some of the other things, social consumption's here, it's a pilot program, but we need to also include making people aware of the law. So, posting 924, the O U Y statutes, 94G, Section 13A to Y, public use, possession, open container, and that sort of thing needs to be in there. And we need to require funding for compliance checks as well during that pilot program. And the last thing in closing, I will say that safe cash handling is very important. And as they stand right now in the regulations, I would highly recommend that they stay in there for obvious reasons.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is David Abell. Good morning, David.
Good morning, General Counsel, and the commissioners. My name is David Abell. I'm a partner at Guggum Procter, I live in Boston, and I represent Warren Glenn Farms LLC. Warren Glenn is made up of several farmers who have submitted an application for a craft cooperative license. As you know, the statute, the adult-use statute, 94G, requires the commission to do everything within its power to promote and encourage the full participation of farmers in the legalized cannabis industry. To date, the commission's done certain things. You're obviously created a type of license, craft cooperative license, that's available on to farmers. But up till now, no such licenses have been issued. There have been zero such licenses. And we believe that the principal reason for that is the way in which the commission has interpreted the priority regulations and applied the priority regulations, particularly how it's applied the priority regulations with respect to RMD, prior RMD applicants. To date, there had been zero licenses for farmers, which you're mandated to promote and encourage. 94% of licenses that, the adult-use licenses that had been issued as of the end of July, 72 out of 77 were given to RMD priority applicants, which the statute says nothing about promoting and encouraging. The experience of Warren Glenn is a case in point. Warren Glenn submitted a complete application package in March of this year and to date, that package, that package has not been so much as cracked by the commission's staff. They have, as far as we know, moved backwards in line rather than forwards in line. And the reason is because one RMD priority applicant after another has been allowed to cut in front of them in line. And when we've, when we've raised this, we've been told by the commission, and it's told by you, Chairman Hoffman, that our hands are tied. We'd love to be able to do something more, but our hands are tied because the enabling statute, specifically Chapter 55, Section 56, really ties our hands and requires us to treat only RMDs and economic empowerment applicants with priority. I'd like to take the remaining time just to ask you to revisit and look carefully at the statute that you rely on as tying your hands, because I think it really does not tie your hands. I'd like to make, if I can, six quick points. I don't think I have time, but we'll see how far I get. First of all, the, this, this section, Section 56, authorizes the commission to give priority treatment to RMDs and EE applicants, but it doesn't limit the commission's discretion in any way, shape, or form. It doesn't say, "These are the only ones who can be treated with priority." The commission has broad discretionary powers to treat others with priority if it chooses. Then, okay, we'll see, five seconds each one. The provision has an A and a B section. I think that the commission to date has read only the A section without looking at the B section. The B section says, "The commission shall identify all applications subject to prioritization under subsection A," that's the RMDs and the EEs, "submitted between April 1 and April 15, 2018, and treat those with priority." It doesn't say anything about applications submitted after April 15, 2018. And yet, the way in which the statute has been interpreted has been to make it clear that you will treat RMDs forever with priority treatment. Now, I have four more points to make and I see that I've run out of time. If you'll permit me, let me just make one other point and the others will be in our The rationale, I mean, it's obvious, it's obvious that the rationale for treating EE applicants with priority, that's clear. EE applicants, you know, were disderved by the law in the past and so they're, it's an attempt to make up for past wrongs. But RMDs, the rationale for treating RMDs with priority was just so that the adult-use program could get off the ground quickly and with speed. And I think the cruel irony, and I think what the proof that you're really misinterpreting the statute, is that what was designed to speed up the process has really ground the process to a halt for farmers and others who the commission is supposed to promote and encourage.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Because I know I'm going to mispronounce this name, I'm just going to use the next speaker's first name, Dr. Uma.
No, not so much easier.
I have your last name, I apologize.
No, not at all. I appreciate it.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I am Dr. Uma Danawalyn. I'm a physician and I'm very proud to say that I haven't written an opioid in a decade. I've been practicing cannabinoid medicine and I've been writing medications and using this as a medicine for my patients. I've been writing for medical marijuana in the state of Washington and now in the state of Massachusetts, and I also write for New Hampshire patients. My youngest patient is six. My eldest is 98. We have been collecting data on every patient that I have registered in the state of Massachusetts from August 2014. We will be completing five years of data. We have also seen that we have a reduction of pharmaceutical medications and narcotics. The average patients are on at least five, if not more, medications. We've shown in a study with 30 patients that we followed up from initial, follow them in three months, as well as in a year's point, that they've had reduction significantly in both prescription meds, narcotics, decrease in their pain, and improvement in their quality of life. I am a family physician. I'm an occupational environmental medicine physician. I'm an occupational environmental medicine physician. I'm specialized in heavy metals. I'm a medical review officer, and I have a master's in public health, and I'm also one of forty-five doctors in the nation that's actually a certified cannabinoid medicine specialist. I follow my patients. I do not issue one-year certifications because I consider health and the care of my patients at the utmost care. Safety first and do no harm is what I say. And I also say cannabis is not for everyone, yet it should be a first-line option and not the last resort. We have patients that are alienated by the healthcare system, discarded, especially if they're coming from pain clinics. Doctors, some tolerate their use, and some actually get engaged in their care and want to know how this is working for them. Pain clinics are testing our patients for THC. This needs to stop, and if they do find it to be positive, they should not be alienated. Healthcare companies that test people, the workers, for being positive, yes, it is still federally illegal, and we know that. If the job does not require a safety-sensitive physician, testing positive for THC should not be held against them. We are seeing patients improve their quality of life and actually go back to work and actually get engaged with their families and improve their own life. And this should be granted to everybody, and it should not be their zip code that dictates this. I see patients with chronic pain, I see veterans, I see mothers, I see grandmothers. I have four generations that come into my office. I want to see changes made that once I register the patient, there should be no further need for the patient to do anything, and automatically I should be able to register two other caregivers, especially with all pediatric patients. They should be able to be done in my office when I register them with CCC. They should receive an email or any other form that they'd be taking to any other dispensary, and immediate care should be given to these patients. I'm able to write other prescriptions that a patient can pick up at any other pharmacy or cannabis, but I'm not with this. So a good question to all, remember, safety first, do no harm, testing is very important. I thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Uma. Next speaker, Congressman Frank. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. As you can see, I am getting old, but there is one thing that I have found improved with age, and that is the pleasure of being able to say, "I told you so." It does not require a bill before, during, or after to do it. And one of the reasons I was glad to have this opportunity, which I appreciate your standing, is I get to say, "I told you so." I'm hoping here that the bill that I filed in December of 1972, my first year in the legislature, which calls for the repeal of restrictions on marijuana imposed by the state so that adults should be able to purchase it unadulterated and no quantity constrained from licensed vendors, and regulations to be set up to that extent. Now, obviously, as I noted, then, it is illegal federally. I believe that great progress is, it's clear progress is being made, several pieces of legislation going through, one of which I think has the verge of it to become law as soon as the repeal of any restriction on financial institutions, which is a public safety matter as well as any other. And it is clear that there is, within a few years, I believe, the federal restrictions will be repealed to the extent that states will have the freedom to do it right. It may be that there would be a, and that's why you know what was so important, that the federal government might retain a veto over regulatory schemes that they find insufficiently protective of public health. But within that, I think that will happen. So your job is doing two forms. One is to look at what we can do now, but also to be thinking about where it goes further. I think this is an important moment for us, not just for allowing access to marijuana. And people have said to me, "Well, what's the reason for it?" And the basic reason for it, I think, is the reason that we ought to have any set of rules in America, is because people want to do, people in this country ought to be allowed to do what they want to do unless they are harming other people. And that's where we are. But there's an additional point. We talk a lot about the visions and the anger generational problem. I think an appropriate set of regulations that make it possible for adults responsibly to use marijuana for any purpose they choose, that that will go in an important way towards healing one of the major divisions we have. You all have heard from younger people, the fundamental inconsistency between the way marijuana is regulated and the way alcohol is regulated, and cigarettes, is one of the causes, I think, of the anger and the distrust for the political system. So we have a chance here to kind of reconcile people in our society. And I think in some ways marijuana legalization is following a path for the same reason as same-sex marriage. We have an ethos in America that says you don't stop people from doing things they want to do just because you don't approve it. So when people want to prevent other people from doing something, they come up with a rationale that says this is damaging to the rest of society because people don't feel comfortable just saying, "I don't want you to do it because I don't like it." So they have to say, "I don't want you to do it, but you're going to hurt other people." And that often works because people are going to err on the side of not causing societal damage. And then somewhere there's a breakthrough. On same-sex marriage, breakthrough came right here. And what happens is the prohibited activity becomes legal. And as it becomes legal in one, two, or three places, it becomes clear that the argument that it was going to cause great societal harm doesn't work. And with the laws of marijuana, I know enough about politics to know that if there are any horror stories out there in which the use of marijuana caused terrible problems in a legal situation, we know about it. So I think we have a chance now to act on the good experiences we've had and put this forward in a responsible way. So I appreciate the chance to advocate for a system which is protective of public health, clearly protects young people more than we have done with cigarettes or alcohol, and allows adults to do what they need to do.
Thank you very much, Congressman.
And I, for the record, let's see, it's an act to decontrol marijuana filed in the general court in December of 1972.
Thank you, Senator. I feel sorry for the next speaker. I think if I got this correct, L. Steeman McGrady, did I get that right?
Oh, I signed up.
Signed up, okay. Next speaker is Matthew Frost.
Good to see you again, and thank you for the opportunity to address the commission and talk about the proposed draft regulations. My name is Matthew Frost, and I'm the founder and CEO of Anna, a high-compliance self-checkout technology for cannabis dispensers. A Massachusetts-based company, Anna is designed to increase retail compliance within marijuana establishments and improve the purchasing experience of customers. The product is a secure self-checkout kiosk that greatly increases staff efficiency.
Just for future speakers, I think that the operative distance is about two inches.
How about this?
If you could watch him with your nose to the side, he wouldn't mind if you get the mic closer.
There we go. How about this?
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. So the product is a secure self-checkout kiosk that greatly increases staff efficiency while preserving store agents' full control and authorization over customer transactions within a marijuana retailer or MTC. Over the past few months, I've had productive conversations, productive conversations with each of the commissioners. As we have discussed, this type of technology is unaddressed under Massachusetts' current regulations. There do not appear to be any conflicts between the technology and the current nor the proposed draft regulations. However, it is recommended that for the commission to allow a retailer or MTC to include this technology within their operating plants, language should be added to Massachusetts' regulations that would make this clarify the change. Per the commission's request, I have electronically submitted that language. This language is not an endorsement of the technology, nor does it deem it automatically compliant. Rather, it is similar to what is already included in the current regulations, allowing approved point-of-sale systems, registers, and sales reporting modules. The language clarifies that secure automated dispensing can be used in retail locations but only if it's compliant use as part of a dispensary's approved operating and security plans. This leaves the commission and local licensing bodies the authority to assess the technology's use on a dispensary-specific basis, using the review procedures already in place. The state of Colorado has set up precedent for this type of technology and regulatory language, which I have submitted with our written comments. Our proposed changes follow Colorado's example, clarifying that this technology is allowed provided it maintains compliance with the rest of the regulatory landscape. This clarification would add several benefits for retailers and consumers. As an automated compliance solution, technology would integrate with metric, operating regulations, and point-of-sale systems to maintain compliance, increase security, and reduce overnervous. I hope the commission will take this opportunity to clarify the regulations and use of this technology by adding the language provided in our written comments. As in other states, this would help marijuana establishments and its agents comply with local regulations, improve customer experience, and keep Massachusetts as one of the safest and most well-regulated cannabis markets in the country. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. This is the end of the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next speaker is David Cabral. Good morning.
He can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's trying to say that he doesn't have an interpreter that he can't talk to.
Very sorry. Is there anybody that could provide, yeah, the commission is supposed to comply with that, that's my, my, zero policy, is there anybody that can provide those services?
Not to, but I'll see that he can try.
All right.
I don't know what happened to me.
We will rectify this before the end of today. So thank you. My apologies, sir. We'll rectify this before the end of today. So I hope that you can stay a little bit. Thank you very much.
Can you write down what you just said and add to one of these?
Say that thing, I'm sorry.
What you just said, you know, we'll provide something, you write it down and add to.
I get it. Can you, somebody on the staff, please, write it down to this gentleman saying that we will try to rectify the situation today, and hopefully you can stay around and we'll pass somebody that is able to provide services. So can we get somebody on the staff to provide that, please? Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Jana Martin. Is it time?
Yes, it's time.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon, now.
Uh, no.
Is this someone? Perspective, I guess. All right, good morning. My name is Jana Martin. I'm an active member of the Cannabis Growers Association and the Massachusetts Growers Association. Also, I'm the board of directors of MassCann. I'm here for two reasons, to talk about a couple of things. The last time I was here, briefly touched on a surgery that I was canceled on waiting on the operating table. I know you'll remember, just up to date. Still haven't had the surgery. So long story. Since I've been here last, just trying to find a new doctor has been a yasco. I have MassHealth. Someone called MassHealth to find a new doctor. It just wasn't easy. Well, I'm part of a network, I'm part of a plan, you can only go to doctors within a certain radius of your house. Long story short, it took me about a month to get an operator on the phone.
Excuse me, a second, Matthew.
Uh-oh. It took me about, it took me about a...
In the front row, you're, I apologize, gentlemen.
It's okay.
Front row, gentleman with the baseball cap on, black leather jacket. Go ahead, Jana, I'm sorry.
So it took me about a month to find a new doctor, I'm sorry, to find somebody on the phone that understood the problem and finally said, "I know the roadblock that you're running into. It's because of where you live." I was trying to get out of my district ultimately. So when he said my only choice was, to get a new doctor, I had to go to the post office, get a pedo box, change my address, let it sit for twenty-four hours, call MassHealth back, change my plan because I was now in a new district, let that sit twenty-four hours, and then search for a new doctor. I found a new orthopedic, but guess what? I now had to find a new primary care because now I get a whole new plan. So this has been going on for like three months, and I still haven't gone to the doctor yet. If you guys could work on, you know, just, all of that happened ultimately was because of the lack of education to the doctors and the physicians. We talked about this before. There's no education. If these doctors need to mandate their license once a year, these make it they have to go to cannabis education. There's no reason why they, you know, they're a course, a class, something that teaches the doctors and the anesthesiologists the safety and the dangers, and the not safety and the not dangers of consuming, you know, cannabis under anesthesia. So that's that. Please fix it. Second part I would like to touch on really quickly is, to my understanding, and forgive me if my knowledge is wrong, there's something going on with the hardship program right now. I'm a medical patient, I'm also a grower. It's kind of a hobby of mine, I've only been at it for about three years. To my understanding, if I register as a hardship patient, I can't go to the dispensary. Wow. If you guys know anything about growing, you know that it takes a while to learn, to be honest, until everybody, I've had bugs, I've had mold, it happened to me in my life, it happened to me on this round. So what happens when I get bugs and mold after like four months of work? Shit, I just lost my whole crop. But guess what? You guys will let me go to the dispensary and get any more medication. Are you kidding me? That's not fair. That's not fair. I'm trying, and I've spent a lot of money and a lot of time. I'm not happy about going and spending more money, but now I have no choice. But you're not going to let me? That's issue number one. Issue number two is you think you're going to come in my home with cameras, with policemen monitoring my grow, telling me when I cannot, when I can and cannot feed my plants? If I move one plant from one spot to the other, I need to go and let them know? Like, who is making these rules? God, I'm insane. I'm sorry, it's insane. It's insane. That's it. Another good day.
Next speaker is Matthew Judge.
Good morning. My name is, my name is Matthew Judge, and I am the Director of Compliance for Theory Wellness. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today and come out with regulations. I would like to briefly touch on four points: the definition of outdoor cultivation, clone testing, making metric match the regulations, and agent registration parts. Speaking about outdoor cultivation, the proposed definition of outdoor cultivation precludes the use of supplemental lighting except for immature plants. Supplemental lighting is standard practice for greenhouse-supported outdoor cultivation across many agricultural products.
Another good day.
Next speaker is Matthew Judge. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is, my name is Matthew Judge, and I am the Director of Compliance for Theory Wellness. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today and talk about the regulations. I would like to briefly touch on four points: the definition of outdoor cultivation, clone testing, making metric match the regulations, and agent registration cards. Speaking about outdoor cultivation, the proposed definition of outdoor cultivation precludes the use of supplemental lighting except for immature plants. Supplemental lighting is standard practice for greenhouse-supported outdoor cultivation across many agricultural products. The current proposal would severely limit the ability to produce suitable clones for planting as it would not allow other plants to be lit and thus kept alive through the winter months. Our proposal is to change the wording of this section to read, "As artificial lighting is permissible only to maintain non-flowering plants." This would allow farmers to maintain nursery operations over the winter, which would be very important to the success of outdoor cannabis cultivation in Massachusetts. I'd also like to talk today about clones. Clones should be exempted from laboratory testing and treated the same way as seeds for the purpose of transfer and sale. Testing of a clone is impractical because sampling of the clone would either damage the clone, or in order to get enough material for a sample, consume the clone entirely. Furthermore, a clone is not a product that is going to be consumed. Therefore, we believe it should be outside of laboratory testing. I would also like to address metric. I've seen the sale-tracking program mandated by the state. I work with this system on a daily basis, and frankly, metric does not comply with current regulations as written. For example, metric manifests do not meet the current definition of a complete manifest in 935 CMR 500. Further, there is no way in metric to produce a blind lab sample. In my dealings with the CNB inspectors, some CNB inspectors, metric seems to be seen as an unchangeable entity, when in truth, it is computer code that is easily changeable. There just needs to be the willingness to change it. And as the, as the, as the client of metric, as the people who subscribe to metric, it needs to come from the Commission and the state to push metric to actually fit the regulations. Finally, I would like to speak on agent ID cards. I carry six different agent ID cards. On a daily basis, I go between our different locations, and I have to switch through my ID cards. I need to be separately registered in each location. This causes tremendous stress on our HR staff, and we believe it causes stress on the Commission as well to process all these registrations with different registration dates. We think one registration per company is quite suitable. Thank you for your time. I will submit my, I will submit this over email.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Gargan. Got to get that right?
Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Gargan, and I am the Operations Supervisor at Theory Wellness. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in regards to the modifications of the regulations.
Thank you.
I'm here to propose a change to the procedure behind duplicate lab samples, which are required in the current subregulatory guidance on testing protocols. Metric currently doesn't have the ability to comply with the testing protocols because it lacks the capability to generate a duplicate sample that is unidentifiable by the receiving lab. Testing labs also have the knowledge and material to calibrate their own testing equipment. Also, duplicate samples have become very costly due to the ten count rule. As of now, metric does not present a way to produce a duplicate lab sample as the production badge and/or harvest badge is always listed on the metric manifest. The regulations on the testing protocol states that the testing of marijuana protocol shall be performed by an independent testing laboratory in compliance with the sampling protocol that was published by the DPH in 2016. According to the reference document, duplicate samples shall not be identified by the laboratory. Thus, metric lacks the ability to comply with the duplicate lab sample protocol. The stated purpose of the duplicate lab sample is to evaluate any variances within the evaluation method. Duplicate samples do not provide any viable data pertaining to the evaluation method. An R&amp;D or NE agent is not qualified to determine whether a variance within a duplicate lab sample is due to the precision of the lab's equipment or the manufacturer's production method. Every independent testing lab is required to be approved by the CTC and accredited by the International Organization for Standardization by an accredited third-party cert buyer whom is part of an international laboratory accrediting corporation. This accreditation is also required to be renewed every two years. Testing labs also perform their own in-house quality control tests. For example, each certification or test result that we receive from a lab such as MCR actually states quality-controlled checks are performed to confirm that the equipment used for reading microbiocultures, which are done at various concentrations, are working correctly, and that the fluorescent for low-rescent readings are accurate. QC checks are performed within thirty, within thirty days of the reported measurements. This indicates that duplicate lab samples are unnecessary when evaluating the lab as they already have the resources to evaluate them more accurately than we can. Therefore, we recommend that duplicate lab sample requirements are removed from the protocol for sampling and analysis of finished, of finished medical marijuana products and marijuana peace products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next speaker is Ryan Windham.
Good morning. Let's get that three minutes rolling. Good morning, Ryan Windham, Plymouth Armor Group. We are Armored Transport Cash Delivery Service in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York. First and foremost, I want to thank the Commission for their proactive research efforts and advocacy for public safety. Second, I want to acknowledge Chief John Carmichael, who spoke earlier, for the same reasons. I think we can disagree on policies, and I'm not a policy person, I'm just a public safety person, and I would say that while we disagree on policies, we can all agree that we want the industry to be safe for our patients, for our employees, for our children, and for our police officers. So that's what I'm here to ask about and talk about this morning. My request to the Commission is that the proposed regulations and rules regarding cash transport be adopted as soon as possible. For further justification, a couple of data points, and then I'll be on my way. When we did a survey of nine other states with more mature industries, we looked at not one or two isolated incidents of assault and armed robbery related just to cash, I'm not talking about product, just the cash, but hundreds. We provided those to the Commission. Second data point is, we forecast into how much cash is going to be moving into the 2020 and 2021 forecast. It is going to be a tsunami. I have talked with several banks and experts in the field, and we could re-decimate as high as half a billion dollars to quantify the risk that's out there. And the third data point that I'll just throw out there from a common sense, and I hope this appeals to your endorsement and your voting in support of these proposed regulations is this: when we have a record sales day, and we pick up your cash, and the Boston Globe or the Boston Herald says $100,000 sales weekend, $200,000 sales weekend, and then provides a website, your hours, the name of your CEO, where your employees live, and you can find that on open sources, it doesn't take much for the bad guys to figure out where the cash is and when it's leaving your facility. I like to say they'll shoot the pizza guy for 50 bucks, and that's not an exaggeration, nor am I intending to be glib, but if they know you've got a quarter of a million dollars and a high weekend of sales and you're trying to get it, it needs to be armored, it needs to be insured, it needs to be tracked and protected for officer's safety, for patient's safety, for our children's safety, for our employee's safety. Again, we can disagree on a lot of policy issues, but I think it's in all of our interests to go forward with the idea that if we safeguard public safety issues, then the industry will be better for us all in the long run. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Next speaker is Christopher LeBlanc.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker is Kyle Bishop. Okay, Alex, no. Here's that. Thank you for not forcing me to pass your last hand. Jeremiah McKinnon. Good morning, Jeremiah.
Good morning. So I just want to say that that speaker list, there wasn't like two, I don't know if there was like a mix-up or anything, but I just signed up on the sign-in sheet. But anyways, thank you for your time. One thing I want to start with here is, one thing I've noticed is it's like five business days for a patient to like, or caregiver to change, like a change of address or something like that. I think that's too short of a time, five days. If you look at like the R&amp;V, they give you 30 days to update your driver's license, so I think that's a little bit too burdensome on patients. You know, say you're moving, my first thought's not really to contact the Commission to let you guys know, or if I lost my ID, my first thought isn't, well, I gotta let the Commission know before the weekend. I think, I want to say this too, this reminds me having the four of you, five here, is the listening session in March, I've heard from a lot of people that they really felt that was positive, that they felt heard by each one of you. And I just want to suggest that even when you're not having a regulatory adjustment, having a public listening session at least once a year is something that I think the community and the Commission could wire from each other. With the regulations, I'd say eliminating the $50 fee, thank you to this Commission. We have to commend you when you do something that, you know, you take our feedback seriously. There was a proposal in 2015 to only give a waiver to veterans, and it was a budget amendment in the State House, and I opposed it because it would have codified the language of patient fees in the statute. And I didn't want patient fees to be in the statute because it's not in there currently. So I opposed that in 2015, so that way we could be here today talking about getting rid of patient fees for everybody. And I think that's going to help all these patients, and I think I speak on behalf of patients that I'm saying, thank you, we look forward to not spending that money for the rest of the year, in 2020, and forever onward, thank you to this Commission. I want to bring up financial hardship. I do notice that it is referenced in here. It's been updated with goals, programs, and measurements, and I think that's great. I think that's going to help because when you guys have your positive impact plan, you create guidance, you hold these people accountable, they have better programs. So I think if we do that with financial hardship, we'll see better hardship programs that better serve patients instead of a static program that is not revised. I do think the Advisory Board came up with some great recommendations on financial hardship that I really do commend the Advisory Board for taking the time to look at, but think the Commission should adopt. One thing that's very concerning to me is this new regulation here, which is 935 CMR 501 105 4B6, which is language that is copied from the adult-use statute, which is regarding advertising, marketing, branding through certain identified promotional items as determined by the Commission, including but not limited to gifts, giveaways, coupons, free or donated marijuana. There's Section 7 of the Chapter 94I of the Medical Statute that says no regulation that can be more restrictive. I don't think that medical coupons should be restricted. There's currently many medical dispensaries that provide coupons currently to patients, and the current regulation says that except the foregoing shall not apply to financial hardship, but I don't think that that's appropriate either because marijuana is not covered by health insurance, there are plenty of people that these coupons are currently helping. Places like New England Treatment Access and others will provide credits up to $50, up to $200 on purchases, and that really does help, especially when physician-certified patients can cost $100 to $300. Getting rid of the $50 fee is going to help patients, you know, not spend as much. But, thank you. The coupons, though, I think that that can be stricken because gifts, giveaways, free and donated marijuana is not more restrictive. I believe that's something that the DPH didn't allow in the first place. So if we get rid of coupons, I think that will prevent a negative impact on medical marijuana patients. And lastly, if anybody watches TV, there's GoodRx. If you've seen the commercials where, when a woman is unable to pay for her son's costing medication at the pharmacy, she's relieved to hear about GoodRx, an app that offers and helps users find coupons to save an average of 50% on retail prescription prices. There's no restriction on prescription discounts or coupons, so I don't think we should be adding that in for medical, especially when it was directed in the statute to apply to adult use. So I don't think creating parity in that sense is going to help patients. Anyways, I have other comments that I'll submit, but thank you for hearing this.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Next speaker is Frank Shaw. Good morning, Frank, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Frank Shaw, and I live in Ipswich, Massachusetts. I'm a 66-year-old, and I have had medical cuts since 2017. During my professional career, my health and my, was pretty good, and I used to make a modest income. I was diagnosed with AIDS as an age patient in 1998. My unexpected diagnosis forced me into early retirement. Since that time, my personal health has become my most important focus. Now I'm a senior, and my only source of income is my social security. I live at poverty level, and I'm grateful for my MassHealth benefits. I'm often unable to afford medical marijuana that helps me with my neuropathy and my feet through the current dispensing hardship programs. The Cannabis Advisory Board, recent recommendations on financial hardships will help improve the low-income patient experience. For this reason, I support the changes made in this draft that will require goals, plans, and measurements as part of the hardship program. The Commission should also create a leadership rating that recognizes industry leaders in providing cost-effective access to those with financial hardship. I'm concerned about the new regulation that poses to restrict medical treatment centers from offering coupons. This practice, this practice actually does help me afford the big cartridges and edibles that I need for my back pain and insomnia. If the medical dispensary wants to offer patients a 30% off coupon for cost-effective access, I want medical marijuana treatment centers to lower patients' costs to whatever means possible. This includes coupons. Note, eliminating medical coupons would be more restrictive than the regulations of the public health. I want to, I want the Commission to support the legislation that would eliminate the vertical integration requirement, HDA 3539 and S1128, would allow the Commission to establish and enforce licensing tiers. This will allow for equity in licensing for a medical marijuana industry by giving small entrepreneurs a path to provide medicine to patients. I want, I want the Commission to support legislation that would cover doctor-certified patients, similar to how insurance companies and MassHealth covers doctors' visits and co-pays. This would make the medical program accessible to a number of people that would order marijuana, not have access to it. Last, I want to thank the Commission for supporting patients by eliminating the $50 patient fee. This has been a long time in coming. Thank you for your time and indulgence.
Thank you, Frank. The next speaker is Nicole Stowe. Thank you very much. Morning, Nicole, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Let me get my notes. I have 13 pages here of the MassCann Act, so I won't be able to go over everything, but I am the president and the thank you commissioners, the executive director, and the staff, and the Cannabis Advisory Board and its members. I also want to thank the MPA's Advisory Board, continues to volunteer time to educate the Commission, the medical community, the general public, and the public entities. Thank you for lowering the $50 fee. It's been five years since we've been fighting for that removal, so I want to thank you. Please also strengthen verified financial hardships for low-income patients. Now it's time to get physicians' visits and medical cannabis to be covered by health insurance through the passage of Representative David Abuff's House 3875, we have a tolerance to insurance coverage of medical cannabis. MPAA supports this bill. MPAA also supports social equity and economic empowerment applicants entering the medical market. We hope one day small business entrepreneurs can take advantage of non-vertical integration. MPAA supports bills that would non-virtually integrate businesses in the medical. Please also lower the buffer zone statewide so that adult-use operators can co-locate the medical program. Please file legislation that will support the Commission to create a compassion fund dedicated to medical marijuana education. This fund would be available to verified 501(c)(3) nonprofits, public entities, the general public, to apply for grants to supply education and social services to patients and the general public. I was thinking about microparticipation in women, and I have a lot of experience in working in male-dominated industries, and now I'm in a new industry where we actually have a mixture of people and with a lot of respect for women, and thought about this: where are the female-dominated industries? And I did research. Education and healthcare are dominated by women. Women are already using their skills and they have gained, that they've gained through their professional experience in education, healthcare, research, and social services. their professional experience in education, healthcare, research, and social services. Those professions that I just mentioned are dominated by women. We should want these groups of professional women that could seamlessly enter the industry through their already-formed 501(c)(3) nonprofits while reducing stigma and enhancing patient care through education and social services by creating compassion funds. It would also be inclusive if you were to provide interpretation services for the deaf and hard-earlier so that they can participate in these. This was an issue that I voted no on, on the Advisory Board, and I wanted to provide some rationale, the body cameras. On January 11th, 2018, MPAA and other advocates protested the federal government outside the federal courthouse in South Boston. Freshly sworn citizens walked out, they spoke with us, asked us what purpose we were there, and said, this is why they love America. It's a safe place for democracy and debate. This is a reminder, this is still federally illegal instructions, and we don't want to store video in places where the federal government can easily access that, and I was thinking about human capital in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, sorry, the next speaker, this is, I just can't read his last name, I apologize, Andrew with an M.
Buddy.
I should have reminded people at the beginning, please turn your cell phones off or come on silent. Can you just, this way, I don't see your last name, please.
M. U. T. Y. This is my name tag right here. We'll get into that in a minute.
Sure, I'm sure we will.
Good morning. Behind you is the, my team, with our message, our local Bostonian way to make ourselves known. I came to you the last time when we spoke with Public Garen, I showed you my t-shirt, More We Less Creed. It's been growing and slowing, slowly taking over the community, but hello, good morning and thank you to the Commission and everyone representing cannabis community here. I do wish to thank you because at the last meeting, like I just said, you really did listen to me, one of the things I was interested in was having distillate and concentrates for microbusinesses, so thank you for taking that time. Another note is the delivery mechanism somehow was talked about for microbusiness, but somehow it's just not talked about anymore. We're great candidates for, we're going to have trucks, we're going to have storage, we're going to have local access to people that can't get to other dispensaries, I really think this needs to be something that's looked at for microbusinesses to have that access and to help us make an extra buck when we can. Another note is canopy size for our microbusinesses. Right now, we are 5,000 restricted, but if you take 5,000 and you have a veg that's associated with that, that's about 1,100 square feet I need to feed, 3,400 square feet. 1,100 square feet at current market value, $3,500 is 1.9 million of revenue, which could be lost. What I ask is if we can take the recommendation, say, for a microbusiness only, 5,000 square feet specifically for flour, let our veg feed that flour without that 5,000 capping added to that. One thing I'd also like you to note, and you all take great notes, is MBN 281535, that is my met, my application for the state, which is known as 420 Industries, and I know in my heart today that this is the first time you've seen it, and I want to thank you because it's been 189 days since I've submitted it. Like Peter said, I'm one of those guys paying $5,000 a month for rent that's hard to come by when it comes to time to feed my family, so now I can tell my investors that you looked at my application number. So, thank you very much. A note about my application is that I come under 420 Industries, most of our advocacy work is done with Bean Town, Greentown. We've rolled the largest joint in the world, it was 100 feet at the Harvest Cup.
120.
And we rolled it twice, we also wrapped it in gold, we put Massachusetts on the map. 33 countries looked at us and said we were doing awesome, fun stuff here, and we did that within 24 hours. We donate plants, clones, we give cannabis to veterans, we take the time out of our day to visit local shops and teach people how to grow. I think one thing that might be happening here is my job might be getting done too well, that people don't want to go to the dispensaries anymore. It's like my product, one of the things that people tell me all the time is it's too expensive and it's not that great. So we need people like us that are small craft cultivators that are coming up and doing it in a different way to have access. And I'm sure the dispensaries should have us here with open arms, who have created this brand for two and a half years, and people ask me all the time, how can I get your product? And I said, well, why don't you talk to Mr. Hoffman? So, last note for the day is my buddy, Mr. Frank, has graciously come down here and taken his time, well, he's part of my team. And if there's anybody in Massachusetts that has put forth more work, I don't think anybody else has done a greater job than he does. And it's clear that, you know, with Massachusetts cannabis groups, we all look at history and where we've been and what would come, and what he's done to get us to this point has actually sculpted this for us. Your jobs are thankful for this man, and he being on my team, he should have some priority, but help us, help him see his dream come true. And just one note, again, to make this set in a little bit, out of your whole board, three of them weren't even born when he put his first legislation in. One of them was watching Mr. Rogers, and the other one was studying economics. So, and if there's, if there's anybody that I think at this time could benefit from his support in this industry right now, I think, I think it would be great to have our team, our license cover, our brand, and Mr. Frank all working together with you guys. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, Congressman?
Yeah.
This, this is setting a precedent that I'm a little concerned about, but it looks like one exception here.
There's only one Bobby Frank.
That's exactly right, that's therefore, this is the only time I'm making this exception.
I've gotten out of practice of going strictly separate, but I regret to mention that I am a board member here, and so that makes it a potential conflict, but I appreciate the record that I have an interest.
Thank you very much, Congressman.
I have a day job too, so I gotta go pay bills.
Goodbye.
Thank God. Of all people, they need your help.
And, next speaker, I'm going to guess we probably take a break, yet eleven speakers, I'm going to do two more speakers, and then we'll take a short break. The next speaker, Michael Latulip.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Michael, how are you?
Doing good. You know, greetings, members of the Commission and the staff. I am Michael Latulip. Overall, I'm very impressed with the body of regulations you all developed here, and there's very little negative to say about them. Much of what I saw as an issue, I addressed through recommendations on the Cannabis Advisory Board or through the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance's full written comment. I can't thank the Commission enough for finally eliminating the patient registration fee and trying to make the program revenue neutral. I'm also fully supportive of the patient complaint process in the draft, I'm very thankful to see that in the regulations. I'm also extremely happy to see that you have included metrics and goals in the financial hardship program regulations and also out-of-state reciprocity being considered. That language could be strengthened further to help ensure operators understand what the Commission expects of them, which I helped draft in MPAA's written comment. I'm also fully supportive of allowing social equity and economic empowerment applicants to serve registered patients as delivery-only operators. This will help patients and medical operators alike. The term visitor could use an update to make it clear that individuals assisting registered patients are allowed into an MTC. Additionally, I'd like to see a verified financial hardship program leadership rating to incentivize medical dispensaries to have robust hardship programs. We are a free healthcare state, and having robust hardship programs should be our goal until federal law changes and insurance covers medical marijuana. To prevent the exploitation of patients inside marijuana retailers, I'd like to have added under consumer education regulations that a non-medical marijuana retailer must have a sign inside their dispensary that says they do not sell medical-use marijuana at that location. These non-medical-use marijuana, non-medical retailers should also be required in their consumer materials to inform patients where the closest MTC is located in relation to their facility. On the municipal front, the municipal social equity guidance has caused some conflict in municipalities regarding the priority of operational and dispensing medical marijuana dispensaries. I heard today plenty of folks upset that the Commission misprioritized RMDs not-operational and dispensing over farmers and social equity licenses. Sounds like the MPAA did in April 2018 when the Commission made the choice to prioritize RMD applications not previously registered with the DPH and not subject to expedited review. The glut of new applications not previously registered that have been deemed priority has caused the entire application process to freeze up. In the words of Congressman Frank, "We told you so." I believe that the legislature intended for operational and dispensing marijuana dispensaries to receive priority on licensing, to ensure a quick turnaround on revenue, and also to protect existing medical operator businesses after adult use began so patient access was not disrupted. The Commission may want to consider editing the municipal equity guidance to clarify what the Commission meant by prioritizing non-operational priority adult-use operators over operational and dispensing priority medical operators before it becomes a legal battle. The Commission should also reconsider how they prioritize priority RMD applications non-operational with new locations not previously registered with the Department of Public Health and not subject to expedited review. On the economic empowerment front, I've noticed many EE applicants do not fully understand the ownership and control portion of the regulations. In order to facilitate funding of EE applicants in the absence of public funding, the Commission should consider allowing EE applicants to apply for changes to their ownership and control prior to applying for important for the Commission to create guidelines for EE applicants on ownership and control regulations so they do not end up in any predatory arrangements. Thank you all for hearing me today. Be sure and review the tremendous work of the Cannabis Advisory Board on these regulations and also the full written comment of the MPAA.
Thank you, Michael. And last speaker, then we'll take a break, Melissa Rutherford. Good morning, Melissa.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can just be sure that everyone's going to hear you by speaking. I think you're fine.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good morning, yeah, my name is Melissa Rutherford, I'm the Director of Compliance with Happy Valley. We're here to speak to a few different points today, obviously have a time limit, we'll work with you. I do want to thank you for your time and attention. One of the things that upon review of the draft regulations, it was noted that in 935 CMR 501 105 61C, as well as in the course line in 500, the new language states certified by a qualified third-party tamper and child-resistant packaging testing firm. We have no objections whatsoever to packaging our products in child-resistant packaging. However, upon researching to determine how we would comply with the stated language, it was discovered that there is no third-party tamper-resistant certifying body available, not in United States of America nor internationally. It doesn't exist. That makes compliance with that statement a bit strange to hold, and we're concerned that as written, it could lead to fraudulent certifications, or that it could lead to enterprising organizations that will provide said certifications but won't actually enhance the publicity. Secondly, already spoken to earlier today, 500 105 4B6, the prohibited marketing practices in a tightly controlled and heavily regulated restrictive marketplace with limited branding or marketing opportunities, the removal of the ability of any business to generate customer loyalty, interest, or reward, as is customary through other businesses, through points-based reward systems, customer loyalty programs, and coupons, isn't harmful, we believe, to the growth of the industry and does not serve public health. As written under current regulations, any program that meets the definition of customer loyalty or points-based reward system is managed via an opt-in register for said program and become involved. Programs are not gamified and they are not designed to attract children. Loyalty programs are used to communicate with our customers regarding information on their purchases, information on new products, additional information on the value or science of the product itself, and through the application of rewards, a way for our customer to make purchases of specific items within niche markets. At no time is a customer encouraged or motivated to purchase more than their legally allowable 935 CMR 501 105 5B6 and C5 concentrates and D3 insurers. The mandate is that the type of marijuana used to produce the product, including what, if any, processing techniques or solvents are used, are to be written out. We're concerned that this additional label requirement doesn't add to the health or safety information for patients. It's going to exceed available space on boxes, setting up a negative customer experience. You know, you open that great bag of Lays and you realize you just paid six bucks for air? Thank you. And that, we're wondering if this moves forward, would it be possible to provide, much like when you go and receive a regular prescription or additional information, interior to a box, a pamphlet, or printed materials? We will have additional written comments, but this is what I have time for today. I appreciate your ears.
Thank you very much, Melissa. It is 11:30, I'm going to suggest we take a break until 11:45, lots of fifteen minutes. Thank you.